All right, let's stand say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, let's go ahead and approve the agenda by motion if someone would please.
I'll make a motion that will you approve.
Thank you, Sandra. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? Here none? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Uh, no one signed up for public comment, comment. Anybody in the audience got any public comment they'd like to make us aware of? Here none? Uh, approval of the consent agenda as shown?
I'll make that motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Andy. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Here none? Uh, moving along to a regular agenda, a bicycle pedestrian plan, Christie Carter seems to be on present.
I'll just give a quick update while Christie and Teresa get set up. Um, way back in 2020s, the town applied for a grant from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, um, for a bicycle and pedestrian planning grant, and we were awarded that later that year, and the Blue Ridge Bicycle Club, contributed fifty percent of the town's match, which was a total of, uh, the town's match was $5,000. They committed $2,500. The $2,500 was covered by the town. So throughout 2021 and 2022, the plan was developed, uh, and Christie can get into the timeline a little bit. Um, so we're here this evening to you, to present to you the final draft. Uh, you're not obligated to adopt this this evening. We're not asking for that. We wanted to get the experts back in front of you, um, so that you can see it. So with that, Christie, I'm gonna get your slideshow going, and then we'll resolve yours.
Thanks, Daniel. Thanks for having us.
Thanks for being here. Yeah, they're sketchy sometimes.
All right. Um, I am going to go through, go through this, the information and presentation, but we have some key points to stop and talk a little bit, just to make sure where you're clear on, on what this is. And Teresa is actually gonna join me in a second and talk, when we get to the actual project, she'll talk us through those. And as Daniel mentioned, um, I'm Christie Carter and my coworker Teresa Buckwalter from Traffic Planning and Design, and we were the consulting firm that got to help on this. Um, I live in Asheville and Teresa lives in Boone, and I don't know who is here when I did a presentation early on. Um, I about ten times in that presentation said Mars Hill instead of Mills River. So please just yell at me if I do that this time around, because I may do that.
Yee-haw or what?
Whatever shakes me up will make me pay attention. Don't let you choose. Um, so I'll go through this and just what I'm gonna cover tonight, review the plan and purpose, um, why this is important for Mills River, and particularly in terms of funding, and give you an overview of the plan, and the meat of that are the recommended projects, and then some question and answer sessions. And the project vision, the steering committee helped us lay this out, and, um, I won't read all these words, but the idea was where we are standing tonight is kind of the center of Mars Hill. Uh, see, I did it. At Mills River, and, um, that's okay. Oh. We'll just awkwardly stare at each other.
Keep calling us Mars Hill.
I know. I know where I am. Okay.
It's okay.
So.
There are new people too.
The idea of being, you're anchored by where we are now, and how we, Teresa came up with the idea and called it kind of a hub and spoke, where all parts of town within reason, you know, some places are pretty far out. What are those connections needed to get from the schools to the town parks? So anchoring, anchoring everything that we came up with by this location. And we learned, we learned from Daniel that that probably is even more important after the land that you just, um, got, you won't see that reflected in this plan, because we learned that yesterday. And then project goals, create the network, build safe streets, streets, improve policy, and promote the culture of walking and biking. One thing with Mills River that made things, that makes things a little bit challenging is since you are a newer town and you have one road, which is the one coming in here, a lot of what you will be able to do in the future depends on your relationship with NC DOT. And so the project goals, um, there are things that you can do, particularly in the Greenway area, promoting that culture of walking and biking. But the actual network along the streets really is gonna be a partnership with DOT. Just to speak about community engagement, um, we engaged over 200 people. I asked Daniel how many you all were able to reach during the comp plan process, and he said he thought it was just over 300. So we had four meetings with the steering committee, um, one bigger drop-in event, two interactive virtual meetings, because we had that community engagement during that second COVID spike. Uh, so that limited it a little bit. Pretty good response to the online survey and, um, some focus group meetings, and then we, um, we were at the back-to-school event probably just over a year ago. So sometimes with community engagement, it depends on, um, it, what a community thinks is good engagement. We know that we had good conversations with the community, and a lot of times we hit a point, if we keep hearing the same things over again, um, we know we've done a pretty good job. Um, so we feel like we got, despite that, the COVID spike and what that meant for community engagement, we feel like we heard from a, a good number of folks. And then this part, when I give this presentation to councils, I think is maybe the most important piece of the presentation, and it has to do with why is this plan important and why is adoption important, if that's what you choose to do? So let me skip to this slide here. This is a diagram to explain NC DOT's complete streets policy. In the past, for example, when you were, have you all been in planning for the Mills River Valley Trail for a long time? When that planning started, the complete street policy was different. So at that time, you had to have, as a community, you had to have a match, and you had to pay D or had to come up with that, that funding. You all work with Conservancy Carolina to come up with that match. In this scenario, they have changed, DOT has changed its, its cost-sharing method, and for towns that are, uh, are smaller, um, if it is in an adopted plan, if a line is in an adopted plan, then that becomes part of the, part of DOT's project, part of the DOT project, and it's not something that the town has to come up with the match to do. So it's a little different than what you've done in the past. Um, I will say there are always some, um, some, some of the details in terms of working things out with DOT, you might have a line, and you might say, we want a shared youth path, and they might say, that's way too expensive, you're gonna get a sidewalk. So those, those things can happen, but it still allows you, um, to have DOT do that full cost rather than you coming up with the match. So to go back to this way, um, so why we think it's important is that the plan sets you up for that future relationship with DOT, so that DOT's complete streets policy can apply. There's also a policy frameworks and policy recommendations, also sets you up for grant funding, um, particularly when you think about the, the Greenway recommendations, um, maybe it's a part-of-grant, maybe there are other ways to get that done. Um, and then public-private partnerships, I like to talk about this work. Once you get a plan adopted, it becomes kind of a hustle of how can we get this done, and maybe it's a little bit of funding from here, and a little bit of funding from here, and some partnerships with businesses, whatever it might be, this kind of helps guide that. And then what I'm gonna do next before Teresa steps up is just talk about the sections of the plan. I'm gonna cover the introduction and the community analysis and a little bit of the network plan, and then Teresa will talk about the projects, and then I'll step back up for the last pieces. So just the introduction, kind of what you would think it would be, talks about the plan, purpose, the vision and the goals, talks about why this plan is important, kind of sharing that information that I just gave to you. And then we move to the current conditions and looking at what's happening in Mills River currently, um, gives a community overview, talks about the existing bicycle pedestrian network, um, what plans are applicable, what's happening in the community in general. That's where we have our public engagement summary, and just talk broadly about what are some of the opportunities and challenges in the town. And then the network plan, um, is really the heart of the plan, and we talk about how we got here, how we came to those recommendations. We're gonna, Teresa's gonna overview those actual priority projects. Um, a little bit about methodology, we won't go into that in great detail, and then, um, I'll pick back up when Teresa's done with that part.
Great, thank you. Down just a little bit. Okay, great. So we think of this as kind of the overall network. And so, of course, you know, you wanna be able to do all this, but we kind of need to bite it off in chunks, right? And so, um, we're looking at, you know, I think we had during the process, we identified over twenty potential projects that could really assist with kind of creating a more multimodal transportation system. Um, but of course, we needed some criteria to help kind of prioritize those. And of course, the priorities kind of came, are, are part of the, the plan, but they don't necessarily have to be the order, and you know, that's up to you all, the order in which you all bite that off. But we looked at specifically a vehicular exposure, so if a pedestrian is exposed to a vehicle for a long amount of time, that got higher points. Um, we looked at connectivity, so those important places where people need to go, um, that got a lot of points as well. Um, and we looked at the public sentiment, and Christie talked about us having an online survey. Part of the online survey, as you all may remember, had, um, an interactive map, and so folks were able to go on there, look at those potential projects, and give, uh, thumbs up to the ones they really liked, or thumbs down to the ones they didn't like. Um, and so that, all that, that in addition to, um, the other public meetings that were online, kind of created a score for public sentiment. Um, and then we also had an, we looked at equity. So, you know, areas where we looked, demographics showed that, you know, what's the age of the population? Population income, looking at number of vehicles available, and so we kind of looked at that, and, and projects with a higher equity score got scored a little higher. So this is, if we kind of keep in mind that it's an overall network, um, the projects though that rose to the top within that are listed here. We won't go, I'm gonna go through each of those real quick, like, um, but you can, if, if, we kind of can visualize this as a network. But, um, this slide here, each of these slides for these projects are what we call cut sheets. They're the exact same thing that are in the plan in front of you. Um, there's a lot of information here, so I'll just kind of quickly summarize. We are showing kind of what would be the connections of this potential project? What would it connect to? Where would it have to cross a road? Um, what are some of the kind of the key elements, right? We share a map on there, we share a project description, and maybe a visual. Um, sometimes we're just sharing a potential cross-section so that of the roadway with the trail or roadway with the sidewalk, um, that, so you all can begin to visualize that. And some of these, we actually did a rendering like this one here, to be able to cross this road, to get into this really main part, main center of the core of Mills River. And so there, each of these has a lot of information in it, but this was the Mills River Elementary School to Mills, Mills River Park. Early on in the process, we heard connecting the schools was really an important thing. Um, and so this project, um, rose to the top. And let me see if I can't scroll. Oh, sorry. Project number two, and we understand, you know, the land has changed here, so this may not be as high a priority, but we're, this was one of the few projects where it'd go not alongside a road, but instead be off-road. Um, Butler Bridge Road Bicycle Lanes, um, you know, be envisioning a roadway with two bicycle lane, lanes on, on either, in either direction. Uh, we know that there's a fair amount of residential development, there's more residential development coming along that road, so that, that became a key place to have bike lanes. Um, Banner Farm Road to the Future Acousta Trail. And we all kind of know that that's coming, and, and rider and folks on bicycles already ride that, but you know, if that, this could be made, you know, it's often prohibitively expensive to do bicycle lanes on roads that already have a very narrow, have a lot of hills. Um, and so we were looking at, you know, wider shoulders, um, in certain places, um, and this was, would be one of those. Um, Ladson Road to the Future Acousta Trail, this, um, kind of was a conversation, um, with the steering committee and with staff, and like, okay, so that could be an alternative to Banner Farm Road, but it could also be a project in and of itself, because one of the terminus is very close to where we're at now, and the other one would be connecting to the future Acousta Trail. So that became really important project as well. On the Mills River Park to the Butler Bridge Road, again, if we're kind of thinking about this overall as a network, kind of getting from here to Butler Bridge, where we're proposing, um, bike lanes, would be an important connector as well. So we're suggesting a multi-use side path here. Um, and again, you know, this probably warrants more feasibility, but you've got some relatively open flat land that would be, make a lot of sense for a multi-use trail. The North Mills River Road Bicycle Facility, so this was another one where it's just a, it's a long stretch, kind of going from where the Ingalls is all the way to the forest, and we know that cyclists use this, so how can this be made to, to be more accommodating? Um, and so we were looking at, um, some key elements in terms of shoulders, um, on the side of the road, but also we include in this overall document, a way to kind of look at making some spot improvements along roads like this, that if you did bicycle lanes, it'd be prohibitively expensive the whole way there. But are there places where, with, um, with sightlines, um, are there places where you could do some improvements along that overall road that accommodate cyclists much more so? Then what's I have just two other projects that I'm gonna share, and then we're going to ask you all to have a more interactive, yeah. So this North Fork to South Fork Connector, we looked at, um, getting from kind of the one, the western, western part of the, of the, of the town limits. Um, again, kind of looking at wider shoulders, um, places that could accommodate cyclists without doing a full bike lane. And then, of course, the South Mills River Valley Trail, um, because this rose to the top as a priority because of all the connectivity that would, it would create, right? People could get from one part north to the other part south. Um, and we understand that's a long project and possibly phasing too in the future. And then, uh, Greenway Connector, the, the Oklahua Greenway Connector, um, this would be kind of going from Butler Bridge Road north, um, to get to West Feld River Park, and then connect to the overall, um, Oklahua Greenway. And this one, I think, is a, is a really good example of a project that, okay, so what's the next step? And the next step for something like this would be a feasibility study, to kind of look at land ownership, and to look at, you know, what are, where's the floodplain, and to get even more kind of into almost like a thirty percent, um, design for something like that. And so that's one that would really warrant kind of looking at a feasibility study, but we think greenways are gonna be pretty key, um, as well for you all. So those were the project I want to go through real quick, and at this point, we do want to take questions and talk about those first two chapters, but also this one as well.
Yeah, in part, some bump you over. And in part, some of it is, is the terrain and the topography, and kind of where you're climbing, um, you kind of climb. There's more climbing up, seems weird. There's more climbing up to get to North Mills River than there is, so people can kind of, the speed coming down is closer to the speeds of vehicles, and so if you've been there and you have been behind bicyclists, um, you know, going out toward North Mills River, they're moving more slowly than coming back into Mills River, so that was the reason. And the cost for, the cost and the feasibility for both sides, uh, the cost would be pretty phenomenal, and just the topography, I, it would be really hard to get that much right of way to do that. And I, let me look at, see what page that's on. We have more and more, because we do a lot of this work in western North Carolina, and we want to give you a realistic project. We also, you know, we want to get the projects on there in case something changes in terms of maybe DOT says we're gonna do modernization on that road and straighten it out a little bit, and that gives you an opportunity. But being realistic about it, the spot improvements that Teresa mentioned are probably more realistic, and I'm gonna stop talking for a second and find this page number to show you what I mean by that.
I think this cross-section is showing that mostly we were restricted by the creek on that side.
Yeah. A lot of it, like I said, has to do with how much right of way. Um, there's not a good example on this one, but for example, on, ooh, I get to use the fancy thing. Um, does it show? Yeah. So for example, sometimes, um, this is still talking about, let me go to a different one, and I can probably show you too. Mills River Valley Trails on both. Let's go. Mills River Park to Butler Bridge. Well, I can show you another way we looked at it too. So for example, here on this one, we actually talked about a multi-use path over here, instead of bike lanes on both sides. One, because we think the connection to the park, um, you probably have younger and older users, and we look at that, what's safer for an eight-year-old or an eighty-year-old. But sometimes when you think about, oh, this road could just do sidewalks, sometimes when you look at the terrain or property ownership, or a ditch, or utilities, we'll look at, if you build a sidewalk, it's generally like a five, four to five-foot buffer and a five-foot sidewalk. So if you do two five-foot buffers and two five-foot sidewalks, you're adding it up pretty quickly, and so if you can get everything onto one side, it's actually less right of way that would be needed. Um, and so that, those are some of the decisions that we put into what facility and on what side it might be able to go on. Um, but the bicycle lanes, I'm trying to, um, this one's more of a shoulder than an actual bicycle lane, so it, a bicycle lane is generally five feet on each side. We're recommending four, because we know it is so constrained. That might be able to happen through a repaving project with NC DOT. Um, so each one of them, we kind of looked at differently, I think, is the short answer. Does that help? Okay. Ideally, they would, yeah. Um, they could. I mean, they would, they would do their own evaluation on it, but they have actually gotten really good compared to when I first started doing this work years ago, um, where all projects that are going through, either through the MPO, or through, um, the, the part of DOT that manages these plans is called the Integrated Mobility Division, IMD. IMD has taken a much more active role in working through project development with the big DOT, um, and that's been great, because they're making sure the plans get recognized. So and depending on if it's more of a local project or more of a, a bigger project, if it's a local project, it's gonna be Daniel, staff, you all, the MPO, kind of saying, you know, this is, this is our vision, this is what we want, how do we make this happen? And then DOT would look at it. If it's a big project, like two eighty or something like that, that's gonna happen more in the Raleigh level and work its way down. But the checkpoints on these projects are getting much better than they were even, you know, seven or eight years ago. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The right of way is challenging. We're not gonna deny that. Yeah. So any other questions on the pieces that we've covered so far?
As the, if the DOT is paying for it, like specifically this Ladson, the town is on the right-hand side of the picture, but not on the left. Does that play any part into funding? Like, we can only pay for the right side, and the DOT should have
I'm trying to think of a, off the top of my head, I'm trying to think of an example where that has been an issue. I'm not thinking, uh, I, I, I think I don't think, I don't, I can't think of anywhere a project had, I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but I can't think of an example of where they're like, nope, they didn't have that in their plan, because the idea is to make these, these streets more accessible to more users and to make them more complete for users. And so I would be surprised if they would say, oh, we're only gonna do it on this one side, because it's in the town and this side's not. It's all like, how can we fit what we want to fit within this right of way? And you all can be participants in that discussion through the MPO, or, you know, if, if you have relationships with DOT, people that you talk to on a regular basis, you can say, hey, I heard this is up for repaving, this is what we have in our plan, what's going on? It's actually really helpful when you all are active participants, when DOT is doing stuff in your community. That's a good question. I'm gonna ask some folks. So if I learn anything different, I'll let Daniel know.
But what happens when
they cut through private property? Like, we had an example or two of that. So how is that handled? Do we go to these landowners? Ask for it, show them the design, and see if there's even a, they're even willing to let us go through there?
Yeah, let me go to well, actually, I'm gonna go to my wet blanket slide. Um, this is my design that we jokingly, but not jokingly, call my wet blanket diagram at the bottom. So you, any, any construction project, whether it be a bicycle pedestrian project, whether it be a roadway project, or whether it be you're building a new outbuilding for your business to, to store your trucks, there's, you get an idea, and it takes a while before you're actually using that barn on your property. So, so the way we look at this is, you all are here now, you've got the ideas on paper, you have a rough cost estimate, and then what happens next is you, um, most, most projects go through what's called a feasibility study, and we were actually out in Silva this morning, or, um, and if you're familiar with Silva, right on 107 is, um, Smoky Mountain High, and they want a better connection from 107 up to the elementary school behind Smoky Mountain, and that goes through school property. And so when we did Jackson's pedestrian plan, we put that line on a map. They got funding to do a feasibility study, so when we were out there this morning, we were actually out there with a, um, one of the assistant superintendents, and we were saying, well, we think it could go here, and he's saying, yeah, that might work, but we have sports teams practicing here, and so we, that, that's the time when you start having that conversation. Um, we are working on the Salute Grade Rail Trail feasibility study, totally different scale, totally different thing. But one of the things that we will do in, in that process is have a landowner meeting and invite people to come talk to us. So, yeah, there's no way that we would recommend, and it's just not feasible or possible, to just go say, yep, line on a map, Mr. Smith, we're gonna go through your property. That doesn't happen. It's like, hey, Mr. Smith, we have an idea. Would you like to sit down and talk to us? Can we work this out? And if he says no, then you try to figure out a different way to go through.
Okay.
Um, and we did, we, we generally, you know, like, um, a good example that didn't, a project that didn't make it into, into this is Hollow Brook Farms, because there are a lot of people that had been cutting through there. I think they have kind of tightened up that a little bit. Um, so we thought we had a good idea. Um, so we thought we had a good idea on how to connect to the park from the school and we sat down and talked to them, um, that, that was one of our. Focus group conversations and they're like, no, we're not really supportive of that. So that project didn't even make it in here.
Okay.
Okay, let me go through these last couple of slides and just to highlight what's in here. Um, did I stop at the right place? Yeah. So beyond the actual projects, there is information about programs that the. Town could implement. Um, one thing we heard a lot of particularly from a friend back here. Is some concern about just, there are a lot of cyclists doing a lot of stuff in and through Mills River. Um, and law enforcement has, gets to see some of the conflict that happens with that. So one of the recommendations. There are communities that have done, um. Either hosting one night at a brewery or even really formal programs to kind of say, hey, drivers and bicycles, we both need to figure out how to get along. So some, those are some of the policy recommendations. We really dug into your land use plan and where that was going. Since that's so new and looked at policy recommendations around that. Um, so just a, a variety of things that are in that chapter. And then the implementation plan, um, I talked about this slide a little bit. And to go back to what I said at the beginning, it is kind of a hustle to get from this guiding plan piece all the way to construction. And then finally, there is an implementation plan that talks about some of the steps that you can take. Um, for example, like being aware of N C D O T's repaving schedule. You, there's just a variety of things there and I think that was the last one. So we're happy to take any last questions or thoughts. And Daniel, you said. Not voting tonight.
That's right. Wanted, wanted to get the final draft back in front of them one more time.
How much like, what would be the town matching the feasibility?
Um, if I M D and D O T do it the way that they did this year, it's a new, the. The feasibility study program through I M D is brand new. This is the first year that we've done it. Um, it didn't cost the towns anything. Um, so we're doing one in Silva, we're doing one in Asheville, one in. Franklin, North Carolina. Where's our fourth one, Teresa? Oh, Hendersonville. Um, and so those towns didn't have to pay anything for those feasibility studies and ideally. That would continue in that way. There, before that funding was available. Um, either communities would pay for it. Um, I've worked on them just through a variety of different sources. Some people had grant money. Some people kind of tried to do project development and keep things in the pipeline. So every year they're working on a feasibility study. Every year they're doing something in design. Every year they're doing, trying to do construction. Doesn't always kind of work that way. But as long as I M D keeps doing these feasibility studies. I don't think you all applied for any. Um, so it's, it would happen, you know, the M P O will put out a release and I M D will put out a, a release. And people applied and D O T made their decisions and you towns didn't have to pay.
So this would be handled different than the.
There's, there's overlap. Yeah, certainly for something like the Mills River Valley Trail, there's definitely overlap. Um, and in fact, we had a conversation, we put the project for the southern end in there. And Teresa mentioned that we think that is a very long-term project. The reason, and there, there was conversation back and forth about whether to include it or not. But if the Mills River, the northern part of the Mills River, Mills River Valley Trail happens and Brevard goes. Through with their planning, you have this gap. And we thought, you know, through this prioritization process as that road gets worked in there, gets, um, goes through that, that process. It makes sense to have it in there. So, so nobody's trying to come up with the match to pay for it. But that would all probably happen through that prioritization process, um, similar to what you're going through now on the north part of the Mills River Valley Trail.
Do you remember from, from Tristan's presentation back in June about how that, that process works to get things into the state transportation improvement plan? The M P O was able to submit a certain number of projects and some of those can be bike and pad. If this plan were on the books, we would, we would look to it and say, we want to submit this project this year or whatever the case may be. So that's, that's that overlap that Chris was talking about.
Who would be responsible for lighting? Like emergency phone?
Um. So for greenways, they, that if those would probably be a, a town project. Thinking about the bike path in Brevard, um. You know, the Cousteau Trail, the Brevard's leading the section through Transylvania County. Um, even though it's going through Transylvania County, Brevard is going to be the maintainer of that. Um, the lighting and stuff gets worked out through the design process. Um, you know, just like you maintain your park. Sometimes those greenways are just linear parks and that's a way to think of them. Um, for the D O T projects, like if it were a sidewalk. Um, then in North Carolina municipalities. Generally, there are some exceptions, but municipalities are generally the ones who take over maintenance of. The sidewalks, even if they're along a D O T road. Um, and then for bike lanes, um. You know, just a standard bike lane. I don't want to say that it totally maintains itself. Um, but in the rural areas, sometimes it's bike clubs that might help. Um, I know way back in Asheville, when we had like one bike lane along Riverside Drive, um, Blue Ridge Bike Club would do bike cleanup days. Every once in a while. Um, and some of that is, you know. I think the more closer into town you are to your town center and where we are, it's probably going to be more Mills River's responsibility. But once you kind of get out, that's probably a discussion. If you're concerned about the maintenance of a, of a bike lane, you probably would want to have that conversation with D O T.
And like our park, it's open from sunup sundown. Are the bicycle baskets going to be? Open from sunup sundown?
Um, the. Bike lanes on the roads, I. It's another good question. I, I, they are part of the roadway network vehicle, bicycles are considered vehicles. I don't think you could close those down. Like at ten o'clock or whatever. Um, but you can set your own rules for greenways. Um, most communities. Some communities have that sun up to sundown. And for some places, and this is the only thing I'll encourage you to think about. Um, it's, sometimes it's a matter of, is this trail for recreation or is this trail for transportation? And those trails and greenways that are more for transportation, you may not want to put that time limit on it. But if they're pure recreation and you have limited resources to take care of things, then maybe you do want to do that. But years are kind of more on the light transportation, recreation and. Um, ideally people would be using them for transportation. That's kind of what we hope, but.
And can you rat a box on them?
That would, in, in your town, that's a policy that you can set. Yep. Um, on the road, they are allowed on the road. Um, so they can be on the road. Yeah. And that's what, if you go through with greenways, that's an important conversation for you as a town to have. Um, because every town is kind of struggling with, do we do this or do we not do it? And how do we do it?
My question may be as much for the town manager as for our guests, but, uh. So public comment was used or public input was used. It is still down to the plan that's been drafted up to this point. Uh, the town adopts this plan or one similar to it. Do you envision the park committee sort of help guide in the council and the town on how to sort of prioritize these ten or. Or, you know, implementation, I guess, is my question is that. Uh, the way we're structured and the input we already have from groups like the Parks and Rec, is that, or we'd have a separate body, would you envision to help sort of. Decide which ones we want to put forth in the improvement plan or?
It would not be a separate body. I think the Parks, Trails and Recreation Advisory Committee would be the only group in addition to just staff review that would come into that. And that would be through the annual budgeting process. Um, when we, when we're kind of doing our call for projects, if you will, with capital improvement projects that, that they would look at and, and make a recommendation on. In a specific year and then it would, it would come back to the council as a capital improvement plan project. Um, and whatever year that, that recommendation would be. But now the, 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 the public input is, I don't say closed, but it's, it's sort of, we have the plan. And from this point forward, if it's adopted, it, it becomes an internal document that we use then to help guide budgeting and investment and. Revenue forecasting, all that kind of good stuff.
And I'll just clarify one point. We are, we, we put a recommendation and it's on page one oh five and it's number two on there. And it's just identify a committee and it says existing or new, because we thought it might. Lot of smaller communities just don't have the capacity to create one more committee. Um, so we just put that in there as an option. It said tasked with a pedestrian, pedestrian planning advisory role. Sorry, I'm reading it wrong. Tasked with a planning advisory role on bicycle and pedestrian issues. So if you have a committee and they're involved in that stuff, that's probably a good one. And then one other kind of adding on to Daniel's comment about community engagement. As you work through that process, there are generally, you know, I don't know if you picked up on the bottom of that arrow that I was showing. Um, there's ongoing community engagement. So to go back to that feasibility study that we were talking about. Um, in Jackson County that we were looking at today. We, we wouldn't just write that plan and say, here you go. There'll be more feedback and community opportunities to involve the community. And really on some of those more specific issues than can be addressed in a broad level plan like this.
One, one thing I'll add to is, um, just how the planning department would use this is, you know, we now have a traffic impact analysis ordinance. So if a development generates enough traffic, they have to do a traffic study. Part of that ordinance involves looking at pedestrian and multi-mo, mo- multimodal facilities. So a good example is the proposed industrial use, the northeast corner of Schoolhouse and Banner Farm. That overlaps with one of these routes and I've asked for them to look at it and possibly build it at their cost.
When it comes to the public internet online surveys, um. I personally wasn't able to get on there. I tried several times and I spoke with Dan. And I asked him about reading the survey and she said that he would look into it, but I never heard back.
And that was the online survey that you had trouble with? I'm sorry that that happened. Um.
I wasn't going on, I thought.
Okay.
And when they had down here, uh. You know, it, it wasn't really well advertised if she's going to be there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, I mean, we can. That's a conversation we can have with Daniel. If that's what you want to direct him to do, um. I, I think what I would, if we went into that process, would I, would be helpful to be clear with me is, is there something that you feel like is missing? That we didn't capture, um, so that it, it might be, I, so what I'm hearing you say is just kind of access was a problem. But do you feel like there is a group of the community that didn't get captured or is there something specific that you thought you might see that you didn't see?
I would say a large portion of town.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we can talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will say doing things online during that COVID time made community engagement harder than what it is. Back to being today.
Well, when I tried it, you had to download an app. Watch it. So I was trying to get on, I called and asked for help and stupid and get on.
Huh. Was it, was the app Mintymeter? Is that, or was that just the survey that was online?
It was a survey that was online.
Huh. I, I believe you, but I haven't heard of people needing an app for that. So that is good information. For us to have, um, we've run that system through D O T. Um, so I will investigate that because I've. Again, I'm not saying I don't believe you because I do. I just have never heard it happen and we can try to ask them about that.
The revenue numbers for construction.
Mm-hmm.
Are, when was those known recently or two years ago?
Probably about a year, uh, uh, how long? It took, this plan took D O T a good while to review. So we. Let me look at my handy dandy little chart of when we had our last steering committee meeting and I can answer that question.
Okay. Okay, so.
After the, it's definitely after the COVID spike.
Okay.
Okay. So our last. Our last steering committee meeting was in October of twenty, twenty twenty-two, and that's usually when we get them finalized. It takes us a while to work through.
Okay.
Those. So not, not quite a year old.
Okay.
But I, I understand the, I understand that question.
Wow, okay.
I just got on my thing.
Okay.
So the. The plan that you put in, the ten plan.
Mm-hmm.
So would any of those be eighty, twenty matches for the town? Any of those plans?
The greenways are the exception. Um, so let me go. So those projects that are along. Um, D O T roads that are either a bike lane, multi-use path. Um, that are going to happen most likely in conjunction with a D O T type project. No, you're not going to have the match. The projects that are more, um, freeway related. So like this one, which again, we know, let me go to a different one since that was changing. Um. Number ten. You want to talk about that? Um, so I'll talk about the funding and if you want to get any details, Teresa's standing by. So this is completely off-road and like if you've been on Hendersonville, Oklahua Greenway. Um. Fletcher Mountain Park or not Fletcher Mountain Park, Fletcher, uh, Billmore Park. They have the circle, but then they kind of have the Kane Creek Greenway. Um, those projects are not D O T funded. That would be the town kind of figuring out, we value this as a linear park, um, as a connection. And you value it enough to try to figure out the funding pack, package for that. Now, what I will say is just because it's in here, doesn't mean that tomorrow you have to start working. It's still totally within your control. You don't think it's a priority in the next five years. You don't have to do it. You, you, you drive that decision. Um. So it's like choosing to build the park. At one point in time, a version of town council chose to do that. They figured out how to get it funded. They made it happen. That would be similar to these, these greenway connector type projects.
So maybe, maybe I should ask Ben. This. Daniel, because he knows how tight I am. So Daniel, if we adopt this plan and there's a plan, there's a path on here that's in, that's in the plan. And the D O T is, is, will pay eighty percent. But it is now automatically on the hook for them, twenty percent, even if we're thinking we don't want to go down that road.
No, we don't, we don't have to commit to a project if we don't want to do it. And if it's on the plan, um, going back to bike lanes, for example. And, and they're going to widen that road, uh, for, uh, just for safety improvements, they're automatically going to pay for that project.
Yeah, I understand that. But if it is one of these that requires the town match and it is in this plan. Are we going to be on the hook if we, if we don't want it to? Just if somebody else comes up with the eighty percent.
Right. Um, I mean, if you had somebody who's going to just come up with the eighty percent, that'd be cool. Um. Yeah, yeah, I hear you. So, um. I think of the, an example that I'm thinking of is, um. A few years ago, I'm losing track of time, but Henderson County had, or there were some projects in Hendersonville. Canoea Road being one of them, North Highland Lake Road being another one, and those two projects in Hendersonville and Flat Rock got contentious. Um, the Canoea Road project, even though it had been a project in plans, multiple plans. Um, the community sentiment, when that project came to be built, um, they were like, no, uh, like this. And it didn't go forward. And so that's where, where I'm talking about, there's more opportunity for community engagement. That sometimes people can be okay with what they see on a broad level plan, but when the rubber meets the road or when the line goes through the property. Those conversations can shift. Um, what we, towns that want to have more connections, what we've seen in terms of. Success is having that plan in place and just working that plan. And whether it be through your capital improvement plan or, you know, whatever the. Or, you know, whatever the case is, like if you decide, you know, you tell Daniel, build them all tomorrow, then he's gotta go figure out a way to do that. Um, but just kind of knowing where you're going, knowing where your community sentiment is, um. And then just trying to do the best you can with that. And sometimes the best you can is saying no when it, when an opportunity comes. That's, that's. Reality. So. You're not on the hook for any money. You have. Control of that.
You understand what I'm saying? I just don't want us to be tied in on something. It's really not something that's within our means to do.
Yeah. Well, another example, we were working in a town in um, east of here. And they're really real concerned, which I think might be where you're coming from a little bit, is it was a project. That we got to thirty percent design and there were some big unknowns. And those unknowns and what that made me for them financially were enough for them to say. We're gonna back off and, and sit on this for a little bit because. You know, retaining walls get expensive. There are some utility questions that we can't put a price tag to right now. So they backed off and they're still trying to, they're still gonna try to work through it. But it, it's just, sometimes you get to that point and that's why that feasibility study point is, piece is important as well. Daniel's probably ready for me to stop talking now.
Yeah.
I got one more question.
Okay.
That's worth tied to ten years.
Hmm, that's correct. Hmm. One more question. The two eighty corridor.
Hmm.
The Mills River Valley Trail, when it was proposed years ago. The speed limit determined the distance away from pavement to the edge of the path. Is that still in play?
Yeah, um. That's where, what, when Teresa mentioned the prioritization of looking at vehicle exposure.
Right.
Um, that, and even new guidance since that was designed out has come out, like it is good to look at. How many lanes you have? How fast is that traffic going? How many cars are going down that road? And figuring out the facility based on that. Um. Another example, but going back to Silva, totally different project, that one oh seven corridor. Been in planning for years and years and years and got planned out before NC DOT's new complete street policy came in. And that roadway, which is a big road, lots of traffic, um, pretty high speed. It is only gonna have a bike path and kind of everybody knows that's not ideal. Um, but. Based on the timing and what happened, um, that's what they're gonna get. And so it's, it is good to think about where it should be before projects get too far along.
Okay. Anything else? Anything?
I think this is the longest council presentation that I've given and it's fun to talk to you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all being here.
I managed to get a lot of stuff up here.
Okay, we'll move on to be memorandum of understanding on the NC Fish and Wildlife Loner Tackle Program.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, so the Parks and Recreation Department is looking to partner with the North Carolina Wildlife Commission to start a loner tackle program. Um, this is a, a program that's been going on um, since the nineties through the North Carolina Wildlife Commission. Who um, just partners with local agencies, different Parks and Recreation Department, community centers, libraries. Um, to just give greater access for fishing in the community. Um, so we thought Mills River Park would be a really great place. We obviously have our, already have our handicap accessible fishing pier. Uh, right here at Mills River and we're just looking to uh, give away to, to create better access to fishing in the community. Um, so um, in front of you, you have um, a policy. Um, if this is something we'd like to do, as well as a contract that we need to sign with the loner tackle program. Um, but essentially, um, what this is, is it's basically like a library system for, for fishing gear. So you get a card, you come, you check out your gear, you're able to use it, go fishing, you check it back in. Um, it includes um, adaptive fishing gear for folks that may have mobility issues. Um, things like that. And it's just a really, uh, really good program that's very popular across the state, um, but is very underrepresented in the western, western part of the state. Um, Moncom County has one site, but the rest of Henderson County, Transylvania County, Polk County, Rutherford County does not have any sites. So. We approved this today. We will be the first one in the county and the region to be able to do it. Um, and one of the best parts is uh, for the cost of the program, the Wildlife Commission covers seventy-five percent of any costs of supplies. And the town's responsible for that remaining uh, twenty-five percent. So um, we have that money already in the budget. Um, so we are just asking. Uh, council if this is an MOU that you all would like to agree to and if we can start this tackle program, loner program right here at Mills River Park. And with that, I'll take any questions or? How many? So that is part of the process. So part of the process, they have to have a loner tackle card. So essentially a library card. Through the North Carolina Wildlife Commission. Now, if they don't have one, they would get it here. Um, and they would have to, there's a form that they'd have to fill out, show that they have. Um, a license. Now, of course, especially since this is geared towards children, anyone under the age of sixteen that is not required to have a fishing license. So they may not have a. A, a license number, but yes, any adult with them who wanted to sign up for the program would have to do that same registration to make sure they do have. The legal fishing licenses needed.
So.
Are we on the hook for that?
Not the others of the town because we aren't dividing here for them to go.
There's not, and we'll assure that through, in our policy, it does say they would have to sign a waiver, um, that the town attorney has already approved. As well as the waiver that the Wildlife Commission does when they get their loner tack, loner tackle card that protects the, the commission and it protects us.
And that waiver gonna state that, say another pedestrian is around that's not related to them and they go. Does that kind of be included?
I think that covers general liability, but that's just like any other using or in the park, you know, if they bring their own fishing gear, it's the same risk. Um, so there's, there's always. General risk of just using a park facility. And so I think that would fall under that and the town would have no responsibility as far as. Somebody, just like if somebody fell off their bicycle or twisted their ankle on the walking trail.
Do you know of another town, uh, impersonally that has this loner program in?
I do, and we reached out to many of them to see how their program was well received. Um, all said, it was a really great program. They said they have very few issues with not getting returned or damaged programs. Um, just very respectful folks. So, um, yeah, we did reach out to a few. Few other municipalities that have offered this program.
And as a wildlife resources, do they uh. Where it comes to advertise on like their website that Town Mills River is participating in the tackle loan?
They do. So they have a pretty comprehensive website and they have even a cool map feature where, you know, if we decide to be part of this program, so we'll be listed on their website. Um, that they can zoom in to find where all the, the loner tackle sites are. So yes, they would, that, and they will also send us. Um, posters and information. So we can, of course, let people know that we're a part of this program and our own community.
So when they loan some tackle out, do they have a. Uh, certain amount of time to bring it back by or how does that work?
So that is a policy we set. Um, so after a lot of discussion and folks with other people, um, we're gonna do a seven day loan. So. Um, that way, you know, especially because we're not open on the weekend. So if someone wants to come in on a Friday, they know they want to go fishing for the weekend and then they can come bring it back on Monday or Tuesday to give them. That ability, there are places that, you know, if we had a onsite nature center, right back there by the fishing pier, that it's a day thing and, you know, as soon as you're done, you bring it back. Um, but we thought a seven day uh, loner would be appropriate in our situation.
We do. We've already cleared a spot. So I hope you say yes.
How many? Fish and Wildlife kind of give you an idea of how many. Outfits, rigs you need?
So to start with, we're looking at, I'm just getting sixteen poles.
Okay.
Um, and then we're gonna order a, a sixty tackle boxes. I think I did forget to mention, so any child who does sign up for their card here and their first time doing it. They get a free tackle box that they, so they have their kit, their gear that they get to take home with them. Um, so, so to start with. It would be, we'd have sixteen poles to land and sixty tackle boxes to distribute to those first time anglers.
Great.
Like you. Run it here, you should stay on town property or?
It doesn't necessarily know. Uh, think of it as like a library book. So if they wanted to go fish up at North Mills River, you know, they can, they check it out, they take it with them. Um, obviously I expect a lot of people would use it here because we all the time. You know, just out in the park, people getting like, oh, they'll see someone out there fishing and be like, man, I didn't even think that I could come fishing here. Seeing ki- kids catch things. And so I do think we would get a lot of that, especially in the summer, you know, a lot of that day use of like, oh, I want to go fishing. I'm gonna go grab a pole, check it out and then bring it in. Um, but again, if they wanted to, we're giving them seven days to be able to return that.
Other two. Anybody want to make a motion to, uh. I guess you need a motion to uh, uh, move along with this and then somebody said something about a contract that need to be signed.
Yeah, if, uh, if, as long as the motion includes the policy that is attached, that basically allows the seven day and most importantly, we do, we are charging a twenty-five dollar non-return fee. So it allows me to collect that fee. Um, and in addition, if you would just give me permission to sign the MOU so we can move forward.
If someone will make that motion for me.
Well, moved. This council approved the MOU as presented and authorized the parks director to enter into the agreement. And also approve the tackle loner program policy as presented.
Okay. Second. Thank you, Randy. Any discussion?
Watch the parts.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There you go. Okay, move that right along. Uh, when y'all get caught up, we'll go with the tax collector. Anything? Wow.
Because they got there at like eleven o'clock because at eleven thirty, the bill was paying in with the bill that he received in the mail and paid it.
Wow. Okay. Yeah, the day they went out.
It amazes me that the citizens from Mill River get their bills.
That is awesome.
For them.
Good, thank.
And, and one little tidbit, you know, everybody, um. Everybody's a little bit upset about their bills going up, but there are actually people whose bills went down. And those are people in my community that have used, right? They're the people who own multiple.
Right. Wow, okay. Thank you. Okay, Nicole, Parks, right?
Uh, just real quick, in case you haven't heard, we got a movie night coming up in the park this weekend. Uh, so eight thirty, about eight thirty at dark, movie should start. We're playing a Top Gun Maverick. Uh, we'll have concessions still uh, being sold. Uh, the rugby middle school cheerleaders will be out here. Doing a fundraiser, selling concessions. So um, they, come on out, bring your, bring your kids and bring cash and buy some popcorn and it's gonna be a really fun night. Um, other than that, I've been getting a lot of questions. Uh, the grading work has started in the back on our, um, our graded field back there. So. Expect that to happen over the next couple of weeks and hopefully we get a little rain before they start seeding. But um. That project's been going on. And then other than that, um, our pollinator garden is now open to walk through. Our path is complete. We're still waiting on some educational signage and a bench to get delivered to kind of finish off that project. But everybody should go check it out. The master gardeners have done an amazing job. On that space. So um, we're very thankful for them.
Thank you. Uh, Michael.
No update tonight, sir.
Thank you. Daniel, when you get called up, you guys say anything?
I got a couple of things for you. Um, first of all, you know, we've been talking about the, the property next door and, and Nicole's working with our consultant to get. Um, a scope of work together for that public input and we need to have a meeting with you all on a work session.
Okay.
So we'd like to request that you add a special meeting to your calendar on October nineteenth at six P M. And we would appreciate a motion to that effect if that works for everyone. That's the week prior to your normal scheduled times.
Six P M?
Hmm, okay. Right.
Oh.
A Thursday. We're gonna have her meet with the Parks and Trails Committee meeting on, or group on Wednesday and then with you all on Thursday.
Everybody able to do that? Okay. All right, uh, if so, uh, we need a motion to approve that meeting.
A special meeting. October nineteenth.
Okay, I got a first, second. Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There you go.
Hey, and then lastly, Mr. Mayor, um, and we have initiated the plumbing repairs on the, on the shelter, but um, Sue has asked that we. Get formal approval from you all to move forward with that approve, move forward with those repairs, just in the event something happens down the road. So. If you all uh, would authorize the town staff to complete those repairs, please, we would appreciate that.
Somebody make us a motion to go ahead and get the plumbing repairs done on the new. Bathroom. Um, picnic show.
Do you want to ask questions first or?
Well, if you can, if you want to.
Maybe I'll go ask you what's on.
Do we have, you want to know costs on it?
We do, but I did not bring them with me, uh, to be prepared. I know we mentioned it at other meetings. It's a few thousand dollars. It's not an astronomical amount of. Money. Yeah. Yeah, I want to say somewhere around five or six thousand dollars. Um, but I can, we can get that emailed to you, those estimated repairs after the meeting. Yeah, that could, it's been a.
It's been a while. We talked, there's the initial part of just getting it up and running. Then there's some. Remediation for a heat, additional heat source later on. So I think. The initial part's like thirty-five hundred and then.
Thirty-eight.
Total.
Is that what it says? You let me, I can look it up.
I thought it was a five hundred dollar debt and the insurance was over.
No, we, no, we was, we talked about just paying it out of pocket, remember? Because. We didn't feel like it was an accident. You know?
Okay.
That's where, I think with the consensus was, am I right?
That's what I feel.
Yeah. Right.
Does anybody know of a timeline?
Uh. They're working on it this week.
Yes.
It'd be nice to have it done before the part deal, but is that even a possible, um, moving apartment, is that even a possibility?
No, but that's not a problem because the movie, it'll be dark anyway. So we would want to.
Keep them.
Keep everybody down by the picnic.
Gotcha.
The playground anyway.
Okay.
I am trying in here to search my emails on that quote. I have a lot of emails from plumbers because we have a lot of stuff break. So. I'm trying to do. We're ready to roll. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. And as it, it was not. And I, that was the water fountain that broke. On park water. No, it's the back loop preventer. Sorry.
Well, she's having any more question on that? Okay.
Three thousand eighty-three dollars and seventy percent. Yeah.
Everybody okay? Any more discussion? I got a first, second. On the restroom. All in favor? Aye, any opposed?
I did.
I got. Oh, my bad. I'm looking down here at Randy and I wrote Randy and M for the sixth, that's nineteenth, my bad. I need a motion to approve that repair for the bathroom.
Thank you, Randy.
Randy is a person, needs a second? Sandra's second? Any discussion? Other more discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on with that. Okay. Council comments?
With what? The mics are working. It depends upon where you wear it on your person, whether or not people can hear it. Okay. So you, you should be fine with where you have them tonight. I've been checking on my phone. And we tested before the Parks Committee meeting on, on Tuesday. And everything seemed to be working then. Were you listening on Facebook or on Zoom? I don't know why that is. I, I checked this afternoon on that recording and I could hear everything. Let me, let me get our, our guru down here, see if we can get it sorted out.
I could hear, um, I could hear him. I could hear Nicole, um, I could hear Eugene. And the rest of them, you couldn't hear. When Tammy spoke, you couldn't hear anything she said.
Maybe we need to give our committee members a lesson on.
Yeah, I was going to say, I do think those tend to be the more soft spoken people. And I think just, I think it's more about maybe teaching them where it needs to be placed. And it's not clearly an issue with the equipment. It's educating our folks on making sure it's where they were.
It's good to hear it.
Right.
Because I, I didn't watch those movies as I was angry. So I want to talk about the farmers market. I know that we had talked about putting them down there in the building. And then I had heard, you know, that they wanted to get a, a master plan put together. And I was hoping that we could have them down there, you know, a home for next year. They've got a grant writer that will help them write grants to help pay for the building, you know, and different things that would help with that. All they need to have is a commitment.
Gotcha. I mentioned to Daniel the other day to move forward with looking for an engineer that would be interested in coming to evaluate the, the structure to make sure it was safe and sound. Before we obligated anything, didn't want to put them in an unsafe environment. And to get us a price on that, so we can move on with that. I think that's a necessity that in itself, no matter what we do with it. You got anything else that?
Have you heard? No, I mean, that was our first step, Nicole, and I wanted to get that inspected. Just to make sure, even though I think we can all look at it and make our own opinion, I think just for liability purposes, we need to have someone with a seal after the name. Give us their, give us their approval. So we have looked into a group out of Asheville. I don't know if we've made contact with them yet, though.
I have tried multiple times, but I have not received a response. I can tell you a lot of engineers are really busy right now. It's a really small project. So I am having, I guess, a hard time getting some response for folks on something. So if anybody knows anybody that might be interested.
Do you know anybody that might come and look at that runoff hand? But they could call.
I'll give it some thought. I'm sitting right here. I'm kind of flat footed.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I would certainly love some, some other contacts because of the folks I've reached out to. I've just not, you know, they're like, oh, yeah, you know, maybe to get to it. And then I never get the, the follow-up. I get the brush off.
Got you. I think once we get that done, where are we at on the master plan? Because I know we're hurrying that to try to get everything in line to get, possibly get some calls back.
Yeah, we are. So that's, we're negotiating scope of work right now with the, the firm that we've chosen to, to do this project. And that's where that October meeting, so essentially as we move forward on this project, the master plan, I would hope to have finalized and approved by you all probably by January or February of next year.
Parks, yeah. So the Parks Recreation Trust Fund Grant will be due in May. Ideally, we'll get that to consultants for review in April. So that's why we'd look for like January, February. We have March to finalize all our grant applications, April to review and May to submit.
Okay.
Will, will the master plan include the buildings, the existing structures there? Is that, or is that just sort of a grayed out area that, that's not part of?
No, it'll certainly be looked at. Again, this isn't going to be your fine level detail, but you know, a general review of that building, you know, would be done to see what are the opportunities there, weaknesses there, you know, does it have repurposing value? Do we think it just needs to be bulldozed the ground and start over? All those things will be looked at. So no, it's not just a grayed out area as far as we're not going to touch it or think about it. But it would be looked at. So what kind of value does it have and what, what does it future hold would kind of be that, that idea there.
Because in some respects, we get, if we get funding through part of, then we've got to follow through with what's on our master plan, correct?
Yes and no. So and I wish I would. It's been a while since I've looked at it too, to make sure I tell you the right thing. But so what we're applying for, for the, the master plan is strictly for the purchase of the property. So, but what you have to do is with that master plan is we will have to highlight what we call a phase one. And in that phase one, I think we have five years to produce that. But we are going to be very strategic that in our phase one, that is going to be something very attainable. You know, we're not going to say we're building out this whole park and we're going to spend millions of dollars and we're going to build the swimming pool everybody wants and the, the four dog parks and the, you know, like we're going to be very strategic on what that face one looks like to make sure it's something that's attainable through the process. Potentially, yeah, we could be looking at something as simple as wa, you know, extending walking paths, adding another restroom facility on that piece. You know, those few little things of what we think is attainable for phase one. And with that phase one, the other thing to consider is when you think that is, if you're going to want to apply for Parks Recreation Trust fund money for that as well. So you got to pick something that's going to be competitive if that's the thought. Or do we just want to get something we know we can afford without grant money, just to know we did that? So those are the kind of things you've got to think through and, and play with through this whole process. And I guess to go back to your grayed out area, the only thing, and we can work through this on the October plan. If, if we feel there's anything that's not going to be used for recreation, that area would have to be grayed out, so to say. So if we think there is going to be another use other than a recreational use, whether it's indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, open space, greenways, that cannot be included in the master plan.
Yes.
It would have to be set aside and essentially parceled out.
Okay. Any more council comment? Got you. Anything else? Here none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Randy. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Jeff. All in favor?